Hello.
Hello.
Test one.
All right. All right, welcome everyone. Good morning. Thank you for being here. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
For the minutes of regular meeting, please.
Does every member have a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion in the minutes, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Seconded by Vice Mayor. Enthusiastically seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items one through eleven.
Does every member have a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion about the consent agenda, then I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do indeed have it. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts and Wichita Airport Authority Boards of Bids and Contracts dated May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Good morning.
Morning Mayor, City Council, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Bids are as follows. For engineering, we have the sanitary sewer relocation I-135 tied with sanitary sewer improvements at Hydraulic and Southeast Boulevard, rejecting all bids. We have Central and One Hundred and Fifty-first Street West Waterline Extension Phase One for Noak Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents. We have the water distribution system, sanitary sewer courtyards at Jacobs Farm Edition for Noak Construction Company Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of five hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have the B and R Plant Two Phase One Demolition for Don Linger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. We have the Homestead Lane to serve the replat of Spring Acres for Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety cents. We have the water distribution system, sanitary sewer Chase Avenue to serve Fox Run Second Edition for Noak Construction Company Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of eight hundred and twelve thousand, six dollars and six cents. For purchasing, we have the renovation of Tex Consover Golf Course Clubhouse for Faha Construction Incorporated for an aggregate total of three hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. We have vehicle washes for Charlie's Car Wash LLC for nine dollars per wash. We had the sand, gravel, rock, mud balls, topsoil, fill dirt, and miscellaneous materials for A-plus Logistics LLC, Cornejo and Sons LLC, North Ridge Sand LLC, Pearson Materials LLC that the groups identified. We have the full-size electric sedan for Don Hatton Chevrolet Incorporated in the amount of fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. We have the bus stop shelters for Duo Guard Industries Incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. We have liquid oxygen for Lampton Welding Supplies in the amount of zero, zero, four, two, five cents per cubic foot. We have thirty-three thousand gross vehicle weight, two thousand gallon flusher truck for Rush Truck Centers of Kansas Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents. We have tree stump removal for two thousand and twenty-three Alfred Superior Tree Service and Shawnee Mission Tree Service for the groups identified. We have meter box rings, lids, and risers for Schultz Supply Incorporated for Group One in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Wichita Wind Water Works Company, Group Two, for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have uniforms for Centos Corporation directing the Parks and Recreation Department to existing vendor contract. We have the expansion node for Converge One in the amount of ninety-two thousand, seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. We have Chevrolet Equinox SUVs for Don Hatton Chevrolet in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars. For airport, we have the airport Jabar snow removal equipment building construction, deferring this to June fifth. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals out on the street. And I would recommend, the bid board is recommended, and take any questions.
Other questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there discussion? If there is no discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. Paul Gunzelman, Public Works and Utilities. This morning, I have a couple new petitions and one revised petition for your consideration. The signatures on the petitions represent one hundred percent of the improvement districts, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. I have a new petition for Auburn Villa's addition in District Four. The project will provide water improvements required for new residential development. We have new petition for Estancia Commercial Second Edition in District Five. The petition will provide water, stormwater drain improvements, sanitary sewer improvements, and paving improvements. We have a revised petition for courtyards at the Moorings. This is north of Thirty-seventh Street and west of Meridian in District Six. On September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, the City Council approved water, sewer, drainage, and paving improvements to serve the courtyards at the Moorings addition. The developer has submitted new petitions or revised petitions that now include additional property purchased by the developer. The budgets remain the same, revised petitions for water, stormwater, sanitary sewer, and paving. It is recommended that the new and revised petitions and budgets adopt the new and amending resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there discussion on this item? If there is no discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new and revised petitions and budgets and adopt the new and amending resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do indeed have it. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for councilmember Johnson to attend the National West Conference, June thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three, and Jackson, Mississippi.
Is there discussion? Any jokes about a one-way ticket or?
Souvenirs.
Souvenirs?
Is it just for one day?
No, it's three days.
All right. So if there's no discussion, then I'll make a, the motion to approve the travel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
Do you have any appointments? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. I would like to appoint Grace Coyne, C-O-Y-N-E, to my district advisory board.
Very good. Further appointments? If there is no further appointments, I'll make a motion to accept that appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Back on comments, are there comments for the good of the body? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Hearing a lot of people want us to do something about all these moths that we have, I don't know if there's any action we can take, but...
To be honest, Councilmember, we've been focused for creating more options for pollinators, and this is a result of that success.
So it's our fault, then?
What, what isn't our fault? Further discussion? All right. If there's no further discussion, then I make a mo- motion that we adjourn so we can get started on our budget workshop.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do indeed have it. We are now in our budget workshop. The chair recognizes or relinquishes the floor to City Manager Leighton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our third workshop. We're going to drill down a little deeper today, talk about reserve policy, which we had alluded to at a last workshop, talk a little bit more about our revenue policy, and also plan on giving you an update of our financial projections and set the stage for what may be the last workshop in June. I'm not, we're going to make that as tentative right now, whether we're going to need that or not in order to get the twenty-four budget recommendations developed for you. Anyway, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth Gultry.
Good morning. I'm Elizabeth Gultry with the Finance Department. I serve as the Budget Officer, and I'm here today to guide you through this workshop. As the City Manager just went over this slide, basically, the purpose of the workshop today is to talk about policy guidelines that'll shape future actions for future budgets, review revenue projections, and then talk about what we'll be doing next. If you're, if, I know there are people who watch these meetings online, so if you're joining us today for the first time, we have had workshops in the past. The March twenty-first workshop really went into great detail on revenues and what drives those revenues and revenue projections. And then if you're interested more in the CIP, that was covered in the April twenty-fifth workshop, as was the connection between ARPA and the CIP. We've just finished a lot of resident engagement in May. We went to all the DAB meetings. We went to a few DAB breakfasts. We participated in the town hall meetings, whether in person or virtually through a video. And then a tentative workshop is scheduled for June twenty-seventh, and the budget will be presented on July eleventh, and adoption is set for the twenty-second of August. And then later this year, we'll start budget development for the upcoming two thousand and twenty-five budget. So jumping straight into reserve policies, which I realize is a pretty weighty topic. So just a reminder about why reserves are pol- are, reserves are important. Reserves provide flexibility to accommodate unexpected events. For example, if there were to be a large natural disaster that FEMA would assist the City of Wichita with, a lot of times, that requires a lot of paperwork, and it's done on a reimbursement basis. So it's important to have cash reserves for that sort of unanticipated event. Reserves are also important for liquidity and cash flow. For example, our property tax revenue was, most of the property tax revenue was received by us in two payments a year. There's smaller, smaller payments throughout the year, so that's another reason why reserves are important for liquidity and cash flow. And then the third reason is that reserves are very closely monitored by rating agencies. They look at our reserve levels to, is one of the elements of our rating because of, that's an indication of financial condition. Some considerations when developing or updating reserve policies. Rating agencies, they encourage the reserve policies and reserves, and they're interested in these policies guiding the prudent use of reserves. GF-Away, which is a professional association for people like me, provides a lot of best practices and model reserve policies that we've been looking at since the last workshop. The policy parameters for reserves, they should divide, define the minimum level that a reserve should have, but also it's important that these policies define when reserves can be used, so those would be a transfer out of a reserve, and when's, when funds are transferred into a reserve. We've had some really prudent practices regarding those transfers in and out, but it's probably a good time for us to pause and formalize those policies. We have two funds that serve as reserves. Those are the permanent reserve and the pension reserve. I will go over the permanent reserve first. This was reserve, this permanent reserve is created in two thousand and nine. Periodically, funds have been transferred into it, and then, so these have been general fund surpluses that occurred in the past three years. Also, one-time revenues have been transferred into that reserve. Expenditures out of this fund have been limited to specific city council action, and that's only occurred once. The current balance in this fund is nineteen point eight million. The practice has been detailed in budget books in the past, but as I said, there's no formal policy at this point.
Elizabeth, can you remind me when that one expenditure was and what it was for?
Gosh, it was maybe a decade, twelve, it was twenty thirteen, yeah.
What was it related to?
But we, it was, I think it was paid back maybe even to, yeah. We'll double check.
All right, thank you.
We're looking, we're looking forward, right?
And was it done by a council action?
It was. That's exactly, yes.
Okay, so there'd be a record of it somewhere.
Yes. There's, I don't know, do you remember?
Can you, do you know, what, what do we make on interest for that?
For that fund?
Nineteen point eight million, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, it, yeah, interest earnings are, are received by the general fund.
So the gen- so the, the interest for the reserve rolls into the general fund?
The only revenue for the permanent reserve fund is transfers in. It doesn't earn revenue otherwise.
Were you asking rate of return, Mayor?
I, I'm wondering, yeah, what, like, is it, is it like in gold bars sitting in a box then? Like, how, how is it in an account but not earning?
It's, yeah, all of our interests, all of our interest earnings are received by the general fund.
Okay.
So. That'd be a policy consideration for an investment policy. Okay, so pension reserve, this is our other reserve fund. This one was created in nineteen ninety-nine to help smooth the impact of changing employer contribution rates into the pension system. It's established, it has a formal, it hasn't, it was formalized in an ordinance. The current balance of this one is about six million. Now, the general fund has its own fund balance, addition to the operating budget. The general fund reserve balance policy was established in two thousand and fifteen. By policy, the minimum reserve level is ten percent. And the current balance is forty, at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, it's forty-six point three million, which is about, it's about sixteen percent of expenditures in two thousand and twenty-three. The AR that was approved in two thousand and fifteen sets the minimum reserve balance, but it doesn't speak to transfers in and out of the general fund reserve. So some rating agency considerations. Generally speaking, the guidelines for AAA-rated city are a balance of greater than thirty percent. Just a reminder, we're AA+. And the level of reserves is an important element of the city's bond rating. There are other parts of the bond rating statement, but that is one that's very quantifiable. An unplanned use of reserves that's not guided by policy can increase the risk of a downgrade. So that's to say, if one had a policy in place for how they use reserves and they were following that policy, there would be less likelihood for a downgrade than if reserves were used in a way that was unplanned and or not included in the city's policies. Some recommendations from GF-Away, they recommend a reserve of at least two months of expenditures. They also recommend that reserve policies increasing, address the size of the reserve, and like what I mentioned with the policy levels with GF-Away, acceptable uses and who has the authority to use the reserves, that's back to Councilmember Frye's question, and when the reserve is replenished, which we've talked about, transfers into reserves. So on the next three slides, we have some recommendations regarding the update or formalization of policies for each of these reserves. So the first one is the general fund reserve. A recommended reserve, a reserve level of fifteen percent of budgeted expenditures is recommended. That's more than what's in the AR right now, and it's a little bit less than what's in the GF-Away recommendation of two months. The reason for the fifteen versus the sixteen or so of GF-Away is that it helps, it's related to certification requirements with the state of Kansas. Transfers out to the permanent reserve are recommended if the general fund operates at a surplus and the year imbalance is projected to exceed fifteen percent of the next year's budget. And that's a practice that we've been following since two thousand and twenty. The recommendation here is just to formalize that in a policy. On the pension reserve, as I mentioned before, there's already an ordinance in place related to this one, so we would recommend sticking with the ordinance and not making any changes here. The minimum balance of fif- a minimum balance of fifteen percent of employer contributions is recommended, and we do comply with that currently. Transfers in wouldn't, would occur when the actuarially recommended pension rates decrease. So you just had that presentation last week. We're actually in a situation where pension rates are increasing. So in that case, one could consider transferring out funds from the pension reserve in order to offset the increase in rates. So how this works is that the rates, the employer contribution rates would be the same as what's in the actuarially recommended contribution, but the transfer in would offset some of that increase. So this is a kind of tricky one, but it's, it's a, it's very wise. Permanent reserve is the last of the reserve policies, and we're recommending formalizing what's happened so far. A minimum reserve of five percent of budgeted expenditures is recommended for the permanent reserve would be five percent of general fund expenditures. Transfers into the permanent reserve would occur, this links to the transfers out of the general fund. Transfers in when there are general funds surplus, there are large one-time revenues or cyclical revenues exceeding parameters, and I'll link to that as we get into the revenue forecast. So we've talked a lot over the last few months about record interest earnings, so that would be an example of a cyclical revenue exceeding parameters. And it's, there's probably something to be said for not building that kind of revenue into your general fund-based budget and anticipating that to continue on an ongoing basis. So the recommendation would be to transfer that revenue out to the permanent reserve. So, so that would be a transfer into the permanent reserve. So transfers out of the permanent reserve, when would you spend the permanent reserve? Those could occur for one-time city council priorities, mitigation of unexpected general fund revenue decreases. And we diligently update our model every month as we receive revenues, but given the uncertainty of the last three years, I think we haven't closed the door on uncertainty at this point. And then the last thing that transfers out of the permanent reserve would be used for, and this recommendation is cash-funded capital improvement projects, which would be a one-time cost. So in case you're curious, what our current reserve status for the general fund, we're fifteen point eight percent, and we're over-reserved by about three and a half million. The guidance on the slide before was five percent for the permanent reserve, and right now, we're above that minimum by five point two million. And then the pension reserve is also slightly over-reserved. So if you're ready, I can move into revenue policy?
So.
Why don't we stop here?
Okay.
Yeah, you'd mentioned a couple of slides earlier that our bond rating could be downgraded since we don't have a policy. So if we were to do anything with these overbalances, we'd have to have the policy in place before we did anything with them.
Yes, I think that if you weren't to, yes, if you weren't to change your, if you weren't to use reserves and you didn't have a policy, I don't think that would be a problem. But if you were to use reserves and you didn't have a policy, that would be a problem.
So as long as we made any changes before we did anything with it.
Yes, if you, you have policy before action, yes.
And that, and that's basically just for predictability, so it doesn't, it looks like we're, we're following a plan and not just sporadically cutting checks out of that account. It's an indication also of responsible budgeting if, if the policy doesn't allow us just to fully rely on that reserve.
Yeah, it's also really helpful for staff as we develop the value of budgets and to have these policies in place to know what should be guiding us, right?
And did we use reserves for a settlement this year? Did we pay out a settlement using reserve? That's not in the slides.
Yeah, we bonded that. There's one point, it was a one point five to two million to help a settlement. We bonded it. I don't know if money went back in, but there was a...
As part of the settlement, the City Council did approve us transferring money from the general fund to the self-insurance fund in order to help finance that settlement, yes?
Oh, it's general fund.
Not permanent reserve.
Nice.
Okay, good. Yeah, the mayor and I were having sidebar, trying to remember.
Which was another reserve, yeah. We have a reserve in the Tork Fund as well, and we transfer in from the general fund.
Out of curiosity, about how many cities out there are at thirty percent of the expenditure rate with the general fund reserve? I know they said that would get us up to a AAA bond, but...
Yeah, I don't think that that would ensure a AAA bond rating. There's other components in the bond rating besides the fund balance. Does, you know, there's other employment factors, other economic factors. I can tell you, I, I've not, I don't have an, I'm sure that I could find this in some report or research that someone has done. Generally, the larger the organization, the smaller the fund balance. So if you were to count all the cities and what their, how many of them are above thirty, your, your answer is going to be nearly all of them, right? Because they carry very large fund balances. Smaller cities have smaller. If you, I think a more appropriate thing would be to look at is of AAA cities, which of them have general fund balances above thirty percent.
Given where we are with our economic base, it, it would be difficult to get to AAA, but adopting policies like this and staying true to them, we'll find that the spread between our debt and what it sells for and what AAA debt sells for is really pretty marginal. And so we've had very favorable sales, I think just because of the financial policies that are in place and our general financial condition.
Just to, I could be wrong, I'm trying to look it up right now, but at the state level, when we budget, we were statutorily required, although we never did this, to have a seven percent or seven point five percent rainy day fund that was out of, I think, the, the recession. So our reserve levels are actually, at the city, if we go forward with the fifteen percent, we're double what the state was required to do, and, and like I said, they, they almost never, never were able to connect that, so.
Yeah, and I think one thing I, to tie back to is the frequency of when revenue is received. So a state that receives income tax is going to receive that pretty regularly through withholdings, and also they receive sales tax pretty regularly, where some of our revenues we receive less often. So that makes a difference.
Oh, and I apologize, according to a new article that just popped up, it looks like the governor this year wanted fifteen percent, so fifteen percent must be the standard for us, but also, yeah, what, what the, the legislature's trying to do as well.
Right, are we ready for revenue policy?
Are we comfortable, is there general consensus that this makes sense? Okay. Thank you.
I like him.
Very good. Right.
Maybe some further conversation about it, because it's, I guess, what is the mechanism? Does it just transfer in if it, if we adopted fifteen percent, does the point eight percent of three point million automatically transfer into our general fund, or what?
Yeah.
Do we, do we vote to approve that?
Yeah, last year, we disclosed, so every December, we have a year-end budget adjustment agenda report for a lot of year-end items. And so that's what authorized the action in last December in two thousand and twenty-two. We have a pretty, I mean, we're not, with, the year is still open technically, but, um, two thousand and twenty-two, but I would think that it would be a good practice to disclose an estimated transfer from the general fund to the permanent reserve each year. an estimated transfer from the general fund to the permanent reserve each year.
Okay.
Right, revenue policy. So some elements of a typical revenue policy for a local government include revenue diversification goals, a linkage between revenues and services. And what I mean by that is what sort of services do general taxes fund? What sort of services do fees for service, services fund? So that would be included in a revenue policy. A cost recovery framework, so is a service that's expected to be recovered by fees recover direct costs? Does it also recover indirect costs? So those types of things would be in that framework. And then a methodology for, methodology for rate setting. So that would include the frequency in the process. The City of Wichita has a lot of outstanding revenue practices in place. However, there is no City of Wichita formal revenue policy at this time. A revenue policy would formalize a lot of longstanding practices. It would improve transparency and fee setting. This would be helpful in a variety of settings. It would provide the steps for how we set rates. It would also provide staff guidance on setting rates and regularly updating fees and charges. So some policy recommendations for a revenue, policy recommendations for revenue, there's two slides for this. The first element would be to define elements of the general fund revenue portfolio and set the target ranges for each revenue type. This ties back to the, to, back to the permanent reserve. One of the reasons for transferring into the permanent reserve is if you have revenues that are overperforming on a cyclical basis. And one of the reasons for transferring out would be the opposite. For example, if we were to set a target range for interest earnings that we would expect to be the target range for our general fund portfolio, it probably indicate that we're above that target range and that we should be transferring out revenue to the permanent reserve. In practice, this is exactly what we've been doing. This would just be formalizing those steps. Another revenue policy recommendation is to define the methodology for identifying services with public benefit that are to be supported by taxes and the revenue and the policy would include an inventory of those services. Three other recommendations that we as staff are presenting to you for inclusion in a revenue policy. Define the process for setting various revenue rates. There's a lot of different ways that revenues are set, and this policy could include those. So identifying if the rate is set by state statute, if it's by ordinance, or if it's an administrative policy are some of the options. Formalizing the cost recovery pyramid. We've talked about the cost recovery pyramid quite a bit for the last ten to fifteen years. The concept behind that is similar to the idea of connecting what is paid for out of general taxes, that things that are of community of benefit are paid for out of taxes and things that are for solely individual benefit are paid for individually. Some of the murkiness of the cost recovery pyramid is in the middle, so things that are partially subsidized. So formalizing that process and that, that thinking, stepping people through that would be a component of a revenue policy. And then last revenue policy recommendation, and you've probably experienced this a few times, is regularly reviewing the schedule, regularly viewing these rates. You've probably had some things presented to you that are an increase for a license or an increase for a fee, and then they say, and it's been this many years since we've updated this and our cost recovery isn't what it used to be. So formalizing that in the process would be of benefit for a number of reasons. And one of them is to re-alleviate some of that situation where licenses are only increased maybe every ten years or so. So those are the revenue policy recommendations.
If you're in general agreement with the direction, then what we'll do is flesh that out. And then at the June workshop, we'll present to you more tangible, similar to what we did on reserves. We'll give you more tangible recommendations. But if, as I said, and we'll probably have to spend some time on that pyramid, because that's, that'll be a guidepost or a guideline for us as we move forward. And also, we want to spend some time talking about how do we do the regular review? I would prefer that we did it annually as part of the budget process and we'd have an adjustment schedule for you, that you would have considered during a workshop and then would be incorporated into the budget.
Yeah, I think we'd want to be careful about any of those that have been delayed for such a long time that the increase would be such a shock that people couldn't afford it. So we'd have to probably step some of those instead of going from zero to one hundred. Kind of phase it in, especially on some of those that have delayed a long time.
Totally agree.
So I don't, I don't know if this is the right place to ask this, but I've been thinking about it since the permanent reserve piece. So on the interest earnings, if we overperform, I know you said all of that goes into the general fund, but is there a, is there a way or a concern to potentially split that between permanent reserve and paying debt? Because we did reduce our mail levy to pay our, our debts before. And I've just been thinking about is that we're not raising that back up right now, but is there a way to put some of that revenue into paying off our debts?
Yeah, I think that, so we talk here about, so if one, if, if we were to have general fund revenue and interest earnings that's higher than our guidelines, right? And we were to transfer into the permanent reserve. What we have recommended here as staff is that transfers out of the permanent reserve could be for one-time cash-funded capital improvement projects. Directing that toward scheduled debt service payments, I don't think I would recommend that because generally, those are ongoing.
Not to transfer out. So if we overperform, that transfers in, right?
To the permanent reserve.
I was asking what, what would it look like? Not suggesting it, just thinking out loud if that was split. So half would go in and then half would go to our debt.
To the debt service fund in general or just service? Okay, I think to the debt service fund in general would make sense because then we could cash fund more projects, right? But the idea of directing it to debt service payments and so.
The policy as, as suggested, it would allow you to cash fund capital projects right away. So you could, you know, that's another way of getting there, right? You're avoiding debt completely by doing the cash funding.
And I think too, that sometimes when you read this, you think cash funding one particular capital improvement project. But it could be any number of capital improvement projects that we have cash funded. So about this time of year, they start getting ready for the fall bond sale. And so the idea is, is this project debt-financed or cash-funded? So this could help with that cash funding. Sorry, that took a while to get there.
It took a while for me to think, I didn't.
Okay, yeah, we're thinking out loud. This isn't, for you watching at home, this is live, right?
And I think that one of the concerns, what was mentioned about what could we do to have the best bond ratings possible? And I think that one of the issues is, of course, hold debt we hold with specials and with different stuff that we do as a city that other comparable cities don't do. I'm wondering i- if, if analysis can be done on the cost of managing that debt versus the amount of, I, I guess, the amount that we make in surplus, you know? Is there a opportunity to save on interest? Save on, on some of that debt so that we could hopefully in- increase our rating overall? Is there a way that we could have a formulaic approach to not just paying off debt or having cash on hand to no longer need that? But we know that we're unique compared to some of our peers. Could we somehow make it so, so we're paying down some of that and have it make, make financial sense? Or would that?
Right, that's why I think the cash funding of projects will actually get you where you want to go. And especially in this climate, as we see interest rates rising, if we can avoid debt today and pay off the low-interest rate debt that we have incurred, we're actually being a better spot financially.
Okay.
Any more discussion about the revenue policy concepts? The third of the policy concepts is, is updates or consideration of a compensation policy. We talked about, this was discussed at the last workshop. Some things that you probably already know, but labor market conditions have changed in the last few years. Employee compensation values, in other words, what employees are looking for in a compensation package are evolving. And obviously, compensation is a factor in recruitment and retention of our positions. Some elements that staff has presented to you for consideration as part of a compensation policy would be reviewing legacy benefit programs, determine their applicability in the future. Reviewing leave policies in context of today's environment. So those would be in things like vacation and sick leave accrual schedules. And considering total compensation criteria. So equity among city staff, comparability with peers and so forth would be elements of a compensation policy. At this point, what you approve each year, there are salary and compensation ordinances that you approve. You also approve health insurance rates each year and so forth. But we don't have a consolidated policy that would guide reviewing how we do the work as opposed to more what, what the work is, so.
I think Bob and I have had a side discussion about retired police officers and being able to use them for some additional staffing and looking at how their pensions and how that affects, would that be part of this discussion as well?
Well, the pension policies are pretty clear and established by the pension boards and by state and federal law. It's, would, I don't, I didn't anticipate it to be part of this discussion. Instead, it would be creative staffing approaches as we go forward.
Okay.
This, this work is going to be a little more difficult, especially since we're going to engage our employees as well. So we plan on doing this in the fall. This will not be something that'll be coming to you as part of this year's budget.
Okay, so that concludes the part of the workshop about policies, all right? So the next section of the workshop is, is we, I wanted to disclose to you what some of the assumptions that we're using to develop the 2024 proposed budget. I think there's been a lot of questions about positions and how we model them. And that really ties back to the last thing that we were talking about, which is the compensation policy. We've have had a lot of vacancies. So disclosure about how the budget is put together on the salaries and benefits side. All authorized positions are budgeted each year. If all of the positions were filled continuously without any lapses, the projection would be accurate. So that is to say that the people working here in January consider, continue to work here for all thirty-six years of the budget without any, without any terminations or retirements. The thing to consider is if employee turnover is not modeled, the expenditure budget will overstate expected costs, which is to say that you would, you would know that you're going to be running a surplus because there is going to be turnover in a given year. I think that that's, there's some problems with that. The first is that there could be services that you should be providing, but you are ignoring the fact that there's going to be employee turnover, so you aren't providing those services. I think on the revenue side, it overstates the amount of revenue that the government needs to collect in, in order to fund the base budget. So those are some reasons why I think it's imperative to model some sort of shrinkage or planned savings in a budget, and it's responsible to do so. So how we model vacancies, we use the term shrinkage and planned savings pretty inter- interchangeably. We model vacancies into the budget. Multiple assumptions can be used to model those savings from vacancies. And I'll go into some of those assumptions that we use. So there's really two kinds of shrinkage. There's the shrinkage that occurs naturally and there's managed shrinkage. Those are two different things. Recently, due to turnover and changes in the labor force, we've been doing a lot of natural shrinkage during the period when, for example, our assess valuation grew by point five percent or point two percent over five years. We did a lot of managed shrinkage. We use shrinkage to manage our budget. So natural shrinkage is based on current vacancies and turnover rates. So we take a, we take a snapshot of vacancies in January. I just did another one in May. Managed shrinkage is to get to expenditure targets. For example, basically, you know, fundamentally to balance your budget. And also managed shrinkage can reflect anticipated program changes. So it could be that something's going to change, a program, the service is going to be delivered differently. And there's going to be savings from it. We're not sure exactly how that will play out in the next three years. And shrinkage is budgeted to reflect that change. So there's been a lot of discussion in departments about the number of vacancies and not being able to fill those, either because of shrinkage that's built into their budget or because of the labor market. It really becomes, it, it goes in a circle because what happens is that people can't fill the positions. Therefore, their vacancies I use to calculate their shrinkage. And then they're trying to reach that shrinkage and then they don't fill positions. So it becomes a recurring situation. We evaluated all of the vacancies in the general fund that were, have, you know, not just somebody that left service a few weeks ago when they're recruiting for it, but longer-term vacancies. Those are evaluated based on priorities of residents in the citizen survey, different varied options for service delivery and the current hiring environment. So we met with departments, they asked him, are you recruiting for this? Can you hire for this? What does, what do things look like? We really were soliciting their feedback. At this point, I anticipate the proposed budget will have thirty to forty fewer authorized positions. I don't think that this, and a lot of times, these are positions that have been open for a considerable amount of time. People, they found other ways to deliver the service, either through efficiency or maybe they have less foot traffic in the office because people are doing work. You know, they are accessing our services differently than they used to. Maybe they're using contractors to deliver the service. So the budget will have fewer positions, but I don't think it'll have an impact on service levels. And if anything, I think for departments, it'll make it clear which positions they should be working with HR and developing a plan for recruiting and retaining employees.
Will we be getting a list of these authorized positions that have been cut?
It'll be in the budget document.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, and there's always a really detailed position summary in the back. So on that, so on the one side, there'll be positions that are eliminated in the proposed budget. On the other side, shrinkage will decrease. So some, most of these vacant positions, they were reflected in shrinkage calculations for the department. So we've gone through and updated that calculation and that shrinkage for these persistently vacant positions will disappear. The turnover rate is going to guide the vacancy model. In the past, we used the turnover, the, how much departments underspent the prior year. What we'll be using, moving forward, is the turnover rate that's been supplied to us by HR. And then, of course, the current year shrinkage, for positions that have already been vacant for six months, that shrinkage, you can already budget it because the position's been vacant. So the current year will include those vacancies for the first six months in the shrinkage. So it's pretty complicated. It's not terribly complicated, but I know there's, this, this is an issue that causes, it creates a lot of questions. So I know I'm really stepping you through it and you probably are worried that I'm going to make you do the calculation and not. So I just wanted to disclose all of those factors.
Are, are the salaries for these positions swept into how we overperform and have extra money? Or do they get swept through the departments?
So for example, there's some departments that have, that they have said we won't be filling this position. So there, the shrinkage in the department will decrease.
Yeah, so if I can.
Yeah.
So we're going to try to appropriately budget shrinkage. If there's any savings by reducing shrinkage, right? And it comes from the elimination of the positions, then that will help us as we move towards twenty-five. That was the whole purpose of this exercise.
Yeah.
Will, will there be a report to either of you on persistently vacant positions like the, the why? Like for instance, if there's a position that just doesn't make enough, like the salary's not high enough, like you would know from maybe interested applicants that. like you would know from maybe interested applicants that, hey, I would like to do that, but it wasn't a high enough salary or something like that.
We went through every position that's vacant, has been vacant for multiple years, and had that discussion with all the department directors. And they are also, each department is working with HR on their unique challenges. And in some cases, we've reclassified positions, some up, some down, right? So we're bringing more entry-level people in and training them ourselves. So it's a different set of circumstances in each department. In some cases, we're back in the market without much of a change in strategy or approach, and hoping that the market's softening a little bit. Whether that's going to be successful or not, we'll know this next time around. But they were pretty meaningful discussions, and we met with every general fund department.
Okay, thank you.
It was like, it's like an eight-page spreadsheet, if I remember. So there are a lot of positions.
Yeah, and that ties back to the compensation policy too, right? So not just talking to employees, but talking to hiring managers, why are these persistently vacant? What, you know, those sort of factors. So it all goes together.
Outside of that, have we changed any of our recruitment practices? Like, are we actively reaching out to HBCUs? Are we using different media sources?
Yes.
So what's the projected savings of that? Do you know off the top of your head?
I have it in a spreadsheet.
The net savings? I'm not sure. We were just talking about that yesterday. They were still working on the calculations yesterday.
So in 2020, it was $630,000. So it's probably at least half mil-ish.
Yeah, something around there. And it's not as straight, there's also some positions that we're eliminating that we're supposed to be charging to projects or grants. There's a variety of, it's not that straightforward, but it's something in that neighborhood.
And we're just looking at civilian positions, not?
That's exactly right, yes.
What?
All right. Okay, now it's time for your monthly revenue update. I even realized as I was putting the calendar in the back of this, we've had a workshop every month since February, and we'll even have the evening public meeting that same Tuesday in July, so.
Can I ask one more question on that?
Yes.
What about FTEs for WPD, since they're, are we down like seventy-five long-term vacancies?
Yeah, so it's really a fool's errand to budget planned savings in the police department, even if they have vacancies, because those vacancies, they make up for with overtime. So, does that answer the question?
Are you asking recruitment strategy or are you asking savings? Both? Yeah, she answered the savings piece, and that is overtime's up substantially in order to fill the service gaps, right? So there's really not that much savings. There's some savings in terms of the vacant position. More importantly, they are undergoing a much more aggressive recruitment strategy right now. Working with HR, they're in the process of putting together a recruitment video that, or a commercial that has been with a production company that's done this in other cities, and have been very successful in terms of increasing the candidate pool. And I think they're shooting that right now.
Are we also doing market studies on salaries too?
No, we did that when we entered into the FOP contract last time. And we actually, the increases that I recommended to you were reflective of improving our position with the comparable cities in the thirty-five corridor. Next year, when we negotiate with FOP again, then we will have that same discussion.
When did we do that, Bob? What was?
Two years ago.
Just because of, you know, the record inflation we're getting hit with, you know, a lot of times, you're seeing salaries and stuff go up in other positions.
In order to do that, you would have to reopen the contract. And, you know, I'm not in favor of reopening just on wages. That was not part of what we negotiated. So there'll be a lot of things we'll look at. Back then, our biggest issue was retaining new recruits. And so you built in the contract retention bonuses for employees, I think, in their first and second year, if I remember right, because we didn't want to lose folks once we got them trained and on the field.
Can we get an update on the recruitment strategy maybe?
Oh, sure.
Okay, on to revenue. Are we ready for revenue? Everyone's ready for revenue? Okay, sorry about that.
We're ready.
We're ready. Okay. So just a reminder, this is the general fund revenue pie chart for the 2023 adopted budget. So biggest sources of revenue are property tax, franchise fees, and then sales tax. And then this is another reminder, we have many different types of revenue. They respond differently to economic conditions. They have different amounts of lag time. They can overlap in their recovery periods, and that's important. A lot of people are forecasting a relatively short recession, and that would be advantageous to our revenue portfolio. Revenue can exhibit cyclical characteristics, which means it's exposed to economic conditions. This is a slightly updated forecast for local sales tax. Just a disclosure of what I've updated in this is that the Fed funds rate has increased. I have moved forward a period of slow growth forward in the projection from where it used to be initially. So what that does is it increases revenue, the revenue projection for 2023. And then additionally, the base is increased moving forward. So even though there's a period of slower growth in twenty-four, the base is higher to start with. Because that puts you in a better position in 2025 and moving forward. Of course, this is a very economically sensitive and volatile revenue source. We look at it and update the projection on a monthly basis. Conveniently, when I'm back in June, that will be after we receive the June revenue distribution, sales tax distribution from the state of Kansas. Oh, and I just went over all of these, so I think I've got everything.
So before we get on to those, and I apologize, on that previous model that you had, does that correlate? Or have you, is it based upon or influenced by Jeremy Hill's economic modeling of the next five years? Or is this independent of that?
I, we received that a few weeks ago, and I considered that when updating this forecast. So his, their taxable retail sales forecast isn't for the entire metro area, so it's not exactly the same boundaries, but I do consider that.
Yeah, his projection is continued growth in our regional economy, so I didn't know if.
Yes, and this looks growing.
As we say, yes.
It looks growing, does it not?
It does. I was just wondering if this is independent of that, so I could triangulate your data with his data, or if it's influenced by his data and therefore a product of his data.
Yeah, so, and we have some timing differences compared to them too. So the boundaries are a little different. We have some timing differences. But yes, that's something that I always look forward to when I receive it every May. So really that, and then two, the May and June distributions, and that's it for updating local sales tax this year. So sales tax assumptions, things that could change sales tax, the state formula, taxing effort is another thing that could change that. It's a county-wide sales tax. It's based on population and the mill levy or taxing effort of each of the communities. In separate counties, their changes in population or taxing effort can impact what our distribution is. Consumer spending habits make a difference. If people start to buy more goods, fewer goods and more services, which aren't taxed, that makes a difference in sales tax. Inflation, of course, has had an outsized influence on our sales tax collections over the last few years. And of course, large-scale macroeconomic conditions. So that is a story on sales tax. The only other revenue update that I'm providing to you is on property tax. Property tax is about thirty-seven percent of the general fund. Revenues are based on just two variables. One is assessed valuation, which we receive every year in mid-June, and the mill levy rate. A disclosure for 2024, I'm expecting our AV notice that we'll be getting shortly to have strong new construction growth, based on the amount of activity that MABCD and the planning department have seen. And also the fact that I think that there were some timing differences last year with finishing construction due to labor and materials, that we actually had a relatively low amount of new construction in our AV for 2023. So I'm expecting that will make up for some of that in 2024, I'm hopeful. Other factors here are, of course, reappraisal, the mill levy allocation between the general fund and the debt service fund. And then the final one, which we don't really mention a lot, but TIF expiration impacts property tax assumptions, and I include that in the model. And in this planning period, we're expecting the expiration of three TIFs, which is quite a few for a planning period. Old Town Cinema, NIC, and East Bank. So that will increase our assessed valuation during this period.
I hope we continue to be cognizant of the real estate market, because things are not moving. I mean, there's a lot of developments that, you're just not seeing houses move. I mean, they've been set in six and seven months. Just stay cognizant.
Yeah, I, yeah. Okay, so this, sorry, is there something else? Okay, so this was the updated, this was the general fund outlook from last month. So balanced this year, I'm using two million in ARPA next year, and then deficits of fifteen, twenty-one, and twenty-four in the out years. I expect that from this slide, you'll probably just want me to go back to my office and work some more for a month, and come back to you in a month, and just keep on doing this for a year. But I don't think this is going to keep on continuing. But I think we'll be needing to use a little less ARPA next year. We'll put that in there. The revenue for 2025, the three factors that are stronger are AV, sales tax, and interest earnings based on our portfolio and where interest rates will be in 2025. All those are really volatile. As the council member Blueba just said about AV, sales tax is very sensitive, interest earnings are sensitive. So the first forecast from a few months ago, I think, was at eighteen million. This one's at eleven. I mean, I think that that's probably eighteen is, you know, probably my natural pessimistic outlook, right? And then eleven is, you know, we, things are strong. And there's a lot of underlying strength in the economy right now. So we'll see, but I still think that, I don't think that two more months of work in my office is going to get us balanced for 2025. I think that the proposed budget will still show a deficit for that year.
Still try.
Still try. Go back there. I'll order you pizza. You're seven of you, seven days of the week. You can order me food every day. Keep me going, so.
I just want to underscore, it's, these are informed recommendations, right, or projections. And so, again, using Jeremy Hill's projections, he talked about that. Mark also visited with the county, went over their projections, and so made some modifications based on what they see as the future. So again, we're trying to, you know, hone in there. Also, the Fed has made some pronouncements regarding interest rates that will allow us to be a little more optimistic about interest rates, and that's helped our position as well.
Yeah, so just every month, there's more information, and so that's the situation. So it's still a structural deficit, and there's been, I mean, I just saw an article from Governing Today that they expect revenues to decline or be stagnant, and then pressure to continue on the expenditure side, particularly with regard to wages and the inflation that we've just experienced over the last few years. And these are all things that we've been talking about. And the gist of the article was, get ready for difficult budgeting. It's like, we're getting, we've been focused on that for months, so at least we're a little bit ahead on that. So I think this is probably a reasonable forecast at this point, knowing what we know.
What percentage are you using for like a CPI indicator or on your expenditure?
Yeah, so on expenditures, I think for CPI, I think there, which that underpins the interest earnings system, or not interest earnings, excuse me, sales tax assumption is underpinned by CPI. And then I looked back and saw how we did compared to CPI for a ten-year period before COVID. So I think I used three percent, then going down to two and a half, and then two percent at the end of the planning period. That's what the Fed has said that they're moving in the direction of.
Really?
No, not quite. It's not easy to do an across-the-board CPI. We asked every department as part of their budget to talk to us about the impact of inflation on their budget. In some areas, we were seeing inflation ranging twenty to thirty percent in some categories. In some areas, especially materials, for instance, in water and sewer, we saw some categories that increased two hundred percent. So we were trying, this is not an across-the-board budgeting of a CPI this year. I don't know what I, I think what, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be so blunt.
I was referring to sales tax, not expenditures.
Exactly, right. She's on the revenue side, not the expenditure side.
Yeah, I'm looking at expenditures and trying to figure out how you do hedge that.
Right.
You've got something that may go up three to five percent, something else you're going to say is going to go up two hundred percent.
Exactly. And so what we're doing is service by service, department by department, in terms of the projections of what we're going to need for the following.
Right, yeah. We invited departments to go in and update their budgets this year, their expenditure budgets, until I think it was January, February. And usually, if people would go in and put in extraordinary increases, we'd say, hey, what is this? What are you doing? Are you sure? And this year, we said, we believe you. And so we've got a lot of that already built in.
So it's more department by department forecast.
Right, and as you can imagine, department is big and is complex and diverse in what they do as public works. It's going to be different in different divisions or service areas.
Yeah, our first one last year that went up a lot, I think that they had a lot of contracts that expired earlier than other people, was traffic maintenance. They had a lot of exposure in 2022.
I mean, you throw supply chain issues and everything else.
Yeah, supply chain is easing up a little bit, but that's still, we're still seeing a lot of pressure on pricing. So even though we made, in some areas, we're still waiting, you know, like buying a bus. You're waiting at least two years, I think, before you're going to get that, and so supply chain is a big issue. But for some of our other goods and services, I think, I won't say it's plentiful, but not long delays, but there has been constant, consistent price increases.
And we've also seen it, we increased in the park department, they had some contracts. A lot of our contracts are written in such a way that there's a one-year contract, and then there's extension. You can read, if both parties want to extend the contract, they can choose to do that. So they were at the end of their period for some of them, and they did a request for proposals for the first time, first time since COVID. And so there were some big increases in the park department, and those have all been built in. So if you go this, just generally, this budget that we're at, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven million, if you go back to the revenue, because the budget is balanced, the revenue pie chart on page thirty-one, so the revenue is going to match the expenditures because it's C-adopted, it was at two-seventy-six. So that's a reflection of how much increases we've built into the budget already, into the base. And we've just carried it forward. And this is just the general fund. There's a lot in water and sewer.
Yeah, so just to put this in perspective, I got my notes from, I think the first time we talked about budgeting for me, it was a 2020, May twenty-second, so nearly three years ago. We were projected to have a fifty-point-two-million-dollar deficit if you add up 2020, 2021, and 2022. We balanced 2023, we balanced 2024, we're looking at 2025, I guess to set us up for success there. And we have about twenty million dollars in our council reserves now. So just the folks who are not only doing the budgeting, but also the departments seem to be really forward-thinking on, when it comes to budgeting, and conscious of what needs, it doesn't need to be cut. It's pretty amazing if you look at the old projections versus where we are now. Again, 2022, we're supposed to be twenty-one million, six-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-three in the red, and we ended in a black with a surplus.
Is that because of ARPA? How much of it was because of interest?
No, some of it. So we had seventy-four million in ARPA. This is a fifty-million deficit. We dedicated twenty million to community initiatives. We're still sitting on ARPA, give or take. No, it's also because we did responsible budgeting.
Oh, sure, yeah. I just wondered how much. Yeah, the three main factors would be interest, unexpected interest earnings, really strong sales tax collections, and then vacant seats that we were unable to fill. The three main reasons. three main reasons. So, but yeah, I, I, I mean, that, that's the, the, the growing expenditures coupled with flat revenues is exactly why we generally show a structural deficit, and I think that that's what we expect in the future. So just generally, from an expenditure side, over the last two years, we've invited departments to put the costs, the contracts, the per, and, and then on commodities, what their costs of, of theirs, what they're buying into their budget, and they've, and they've done that. And then we've added growth onto that, because the outlook is that there will still continue to be some inflation, and it will just not be at the rate we have. Does that answer, we, that's been, that was a lot of time, but does that answer your question?
Gas was over a dollar last, this time last year compared to this time now. So, yeah, the inflationary factors not only are stabilizing, but.
Yeah. I got one once. It was a requisition. Please approve this. We found the last barrels of yellow paint somewhere. So, I mean, there's been, you know, we buy so many different things, um, to continue to provide services. So, but does that help council member Blueba?
Yes.
Okay. That was roundabout, but it's not easy. So any other questions about the forecast? Okay. So we've, we've touched on all these things. Um, ARPA funding won't be available after '24. Mod, very moderate revenue growth, um, wage costs that are expected to exceed revenue growth, and then we will be focused on addressing that structural imbalance. Things that can change the forecast, economic conditions, which would be, uh, you know, recession that's sooner, later, longer in duration, more severe, all those things would, um, impact the projection. Um, wage and benefits costs that are different than what we have projected in our model. Um, vacancies, so the filling of vacant, filling of vacant positions are the opposite, retention and filling of vacant, vacancies. Um, and then any policy changes, uh, policy changes would impact this. So that is the story on the forecast. So, um, right now in the budget office, we are focused on developing and putting together the 2024 proposed budget based on these revenue assumptions, based on the, the visits that we have at departments about vacancies and so forth. Um, but I think it's also important to look forward to 2025. Um, so these are some tools, as a reminder, that we'll be using. This effort will begin, um, in the late fall. So the citizen survey dashboard, so that was, um, available, I think, in February. Um, and it will, there'll be another citizen survey this fall, and then there'll be more results on the dashboard, and I think it will make the data even more rich and more usable. Um, performance outcomes is a project that we're working on right now. Um, there's a possibility for some more data visualization, so using federal data and mashing that up with our own performance data, evaluating the programs that we provide, and then continuing to update our financial forecasts. So what's ahead in the near term? Um, mid-June is when we receive the AV estimate, and then we're tentatively scheduled for a forecast on June, uh, a workshop, sorry, a workshop on June 27. And then July 11th is when the budget will be adopted. Um, the second public hearing, the evening one, will be on July 25. Then there'll be, um, another one during the council meeting on the 15th of August, and then adoption on the 22nd. So that is all I have prepared for you today. Um, thanks for asking great questions. Sometimes it takes a bit to process them all, but we, I think we worked through it together. It is a true workshop. So if you have anything else for now?
Yeah, if I, if I could jump in here. So, uh, the reason that we have, uh, a tentative workshop for June is that, um, what we plan on bringing forward for '24 is basically a status quo budget, right? So trying to maintain existing service levels. However, I do think there may be some strategic program options that have been presented by the departments that you may want to consider. I'll use police as an example. I told you we would rely heavily on citizen survey results and outcomes. And if you remember, police was high, uh, in, in terms of importance, but also low in terms of satisfaction, or lower than some other service area. So it was in that one quadrant that we should focus on, if you remember the, the quadrant, um, uh, diagram. So there are some things in police that we may be bringing forward for consideration, mindful that they will not make us, make it any easier for '25 to balance, but it, it's a priority area for the community, and I think for, for all of you. So an example, uh, would be, we have a number of recommendations in the Jensen Hughes report. There are some things we probably need to do in order to implement some of those recommendations. There are also some things that the chief wants to do, um, in, uh, addressing, uh, data analytics, better utilization of data for staffing, deployment, uh, decisions, as well as to attack certain, you know, uh, violent crime and some other issues like that. So we'll be bringing recommendations forward, uh, on a strategic basis. Probably have some in there that I would not necessarily recommend, but I think you want to discuss to, so that you can shape the, the '24 budget. And we'll talk about what the financial outcome or in, um, financial results will be. But we'll try to do it outcomes-based, right? So everything we bring forward, we'll try to tell you what is, um, what the impact will be in that regard. We also went, just so you know, on that vacancy list, when we took it down, uh, when, when we took it down, the 30 to 40 positions, every, all of those discussions are outcome as well. And what, what, if anything, would, would have been sacrificed from a service standpoint. So when you see that list, more than happy to have that discussion. Um, just wanted to make sure I could create that expectation. That's the, the roll up your sleeves, the last part of the, the budget work before I present the final budget in July. Any questions? Any issues?
Looks better than last month, so can't wait for June.
Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your attention. Really, I mean, it, it really, as staff, this is hard work. It's hard work for everyone, and it really is edifying to have you all as invested in the processes you are.
I do want to thank the department directors too. They have been, uh, committed to making this process work. And so they've given time and sometimes very short notice in terms of when we just sit down and have meetings and work through this.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Mary, that's all we have.
That's all. All right. Well, thank you all, and thank you, Elizabeth, uh, for, for all you do. With that, uh, there's no objection. We're adjourned. See you none. We're adjourned. Thank you.